Okay, we are live and thank you very much for joining us. This is the John Riley Project. It's episode number 178. And we're so pleased today, so honored today to have as our guest incumbent Poway City Councilman, Barry Leonard. Barry, how are you doing?
I'm doing well today, John. How are you today?
Doing great, man. So thanks for joining us. You know, you're the final piece of the puzzle of all the candidates that are running for city council and for school board in Poway. You're the last one of the group to join us here on the podcast. So thanks for coming on board and we'll hope we have a little fun today, kind of talking through some issues.
I look forward to it, John.
You know, I just want to tell everyone in the audience, you know, this is a live stream. So we are taking your questions, your comments. If you have a question for Councilman Leonard, you know, feel free to type those in to your Facebook or your YouTube comments. They'll pop up on the screen. I can see him. I'm pretty sure Barry can see the area there on the side of the screen. So we'll see those questions and we'll do our best to respond to the audience. But you know, let's kind of get started here. You know, you're running for reelection. You were successful in 2016. And I know prior to that you were appointed, I think, was it after Mayor Voss won the mayor's seat? I think you were appointed to fill his seat, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So wow, so that's been what about five, five and a half years you've been on city council?
Yeah, almost six.
Okay. So you know, let's just kind of share with us a little bit about your experience. I mean, what are, what are some of the things that first of all, made you want to be a city council person? And what are the main reasons that you're choosing to run for reelection here in 2020?
Okay, good. You know, I don't really care for politics a whole lot. I'm not a politician. I'm more of a volunteer. And when I moved here to Poway, I had a bit of extra time on my hands. So I started to volunteer and do different things at my church in my neighborhood of my HOA, which I have the dubious honor of probably being the longest tenured president of the HOA now because nobody else wants the job. One of those things where everybody else takes one step backwards and you step forward, oh, I didn't even move. But you know, because I was part of the HOA, I was requested to come meet the folks at Green Valley Civic Association and, and I had no experience with them, but they were trying to get the HOA folks together, try and identify each other and get to know each other for common interest. I found them to be, you know, honest, sincere people that really cared about their neighborhoods. And, and they asked me to join their team. So I agreed to that. While I was there, I met Bruce Tarzy, who at the time was very well. And he told me stories about back in the day on the council and, and this and that. And I was like, yeah, you know, whatever. But there was a couple of gentlemen running for city council and, and one was a gentleman who I considered to be a lawyer in a suit, who pretty much told you what you wanted to hear and, and the typical political rhetoric. And, and the other guy shows up in jeans and cowboy boots and a hat.
I think I know you're talking about.
Well, yeah. And I, I said afterwards, I called him up and I said, hey, you're full of it because you don't sound a bit like a politician. And he said, I'm not, I'm just a concerned citizen and, and I think we could do better. And, and I'm going to run for city council. And I've never put a candidate's sign in my yard prior to that. But I said to him, you know, you're probably my kind of politician because I don't really care for politicians. And so I started a relationship with Steve and, and we had a couple of neighborhood issues that he helped out with. And, and I got to like the guy. I said, you know what? He looks you in the eye, tells you the truth and, and you might not like the answer, but that's what you're going to get. And that's kind of how I operate. So he, he was successful as we know. And then two years later, he decided to run for mayor and, and I supported him once again. And he called me one day prior to that and said that, you know, the budget review committee had, had room on it and thought that I would be pretty good at, at understanding the nuances of the finances in the city. And I'd get to meet the city manager and, and the city department heads and other folks. And, and so I accepted it because he asked me to do it. And it was just an extension of volunteering for all the things that I had done. I, I found it really interesting. I was very impressed with the way the city ran and, and the quality of the people that they had on the team, their ability to articulate things that they were running almost $100 million business. And so at the time Penny Riley was the city manager.
No relation.
Yeah, that's what they say. But she had a, she had a lot of experience. She started as a clerk at City Hall and she rose up the ranks and, and she knew a lot about a lot. So I, I really, I was, I was happy with that. And then when Steve became mayor, he asked me to help him sort through some of the folks that might show up and, and want to be appointed to the job. And, and I remember making a fatal error. I said, oh, I could probably do better than these people. And good, guess what? I put your name on the list. So I think I was 20th person. There were 20 that showed up for that. We did three rounds of interviews and, and it got down to Karen Dunn and myself. And Karen would have made just as good a choice. She's very solid, but they selected me. And I think the reason they did was because I, I had what they were looking for. They were looking for somebody who would, would approach it from outside, somebody who would look at it like a business and, and somebody who would be available, be a people person and, and kind of fit the science or the chemistry a little bit. And so a couple of years later, I decided, you know, folks approached me as usual and it's like, what are you going to do? And so I ran and I was elected. So here we are four years later and the, the reason I'm running it hasn't changed. The reason is because I have the time and the talent to, to help get the city moving in the right direction, keep things going the way they should and not to mess things up. You know, we've, we've got a, a secret code between all the council members and the mayor. And that motto, that code is don't mess it up. And so that's, you know, that's our goal is to, to guide the ship carefully on the course and, and to make sure that we've got the right crew on board, the boat and that, you know, that the destination's not only identified, but it's achievable. So for me, it was let's stop talking about things and let's start doing things. The past city councils had identified projects they wanted to do. And, and quite frankly, they had the wherewithal to do it. They had the funding to do it and they didn't pull the trigger. So you know, when I came aboard, I was, I was part of that, that advocacy group that said, let's get some things done. So we've, we've dug a few holes in the ground and, and you know, nothing comes easy. You know, one of my pet peeves was Escola Road was that, you know, if the, if the funding is there and the desire is there, why can't we provide a safe path for the kids to, to, you know, not only get back and forth to high school, but for, you know, joggers and other folks that would want to use the road safely and didn't really have that choice. What I didn't understand was how old that county road really is and how much stuff is underneath that road that in the past, they just dug a hole and they put a pipe someplace and they didn't really document it too well. And I also found out about what happens when you hire the lowest qualified bid.
Yeah.
And qualified is a subjective term. So we hit a few bumps on that one, but I think we'll hear Tuesday night or tomorrow night, actually, when we do the capital improvement project review that, that, that seems to be tracking much better now. So essentially, yeah.
I was going to say sometimes, you know, you get what you pay for, you know? You, you want to get the lowest bid to protect the interest of taxpayers, but sometimes you take, you sacrifice a little in doing so. It's interesting that you refer to the business or to the city as like $100 million a year business. That's, you know, you'll hear politicians sometimes refer to government as a business. Sometimes people criticize politicians for considering government like a business. But what about the budget? I mean, I've been hearing stories that, you know, we've been fiscally responsible for a long time, but our expenses are really growing much more rapidly than our revenue is growing. So help me understand that a little better and how is this looking out on future year projections?
Yeah, all that's very true. I mean, I have a business background and, and there's an absolute difference to me anyway of people who've signed the front of a paycheck versus people who've signed the back of a paycheck and the way they approach problem solving. And I have a, you know, pretty simple understanding of the city as a business and, and I look at us as the board of directors. And so essentially we're, we're, we're making policy that helps continue that, that ship on its path. And, and we hire a CEO and president who's our city manager. And we hire a city attorney that will keep us, you know, legally within bounds. And then it's up to our city manager to make sure that he hires the, the best and the brightest team that, that we can afford to put on the field. And, and he's done a really good job at that. So I would say if I want to take a victory lap, we hired a terrific city manager. When we lost our last one, it was, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty about, boy, can we find somebody as good as she was because she was really good. And Chris Hazelton has done an outstanding job for us. But the budget is the budget and the budget really hasn't changed a lot. The city runs lean. We have 220 employees. We've, we've got vacancies we haven't filled now because we can't justify them with COVID and, and other things like that. So we have a director slot that's not filled right now. But public safety is really expensive.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, it's about 54% of the budget. And, and the latest sheriff's contract was a stiff one. The sheriff's department, which is our police department, they get about a 5% raise each year for five years. And we're partway through that now. But it takes a big chunk of taxpayer dollars to afford to have high quality policing. And it's, you know, it's a choice that we've made to say that public safety comes first and it comes at a cost. Our fire department, they're direct employees, so we're responsible for their pensions as well. And pension costs are very high. So this year we had a number of things happen. Some people would say it was the perfect storm that we have the sheriff's department contract going up. We have the fire department pensions and, and city employee pensions as well. We have insurance costs that continue to go up and we don't have a whole lot of control over these things. And so we, we depend on the revenue side. We look at, okay, now can we sell more cars down there on Poway Road? Because that sales tax really is meaningful. And I think Kalen just announced that she bought a car down at, at one of the dealers down there. I did as well.
You did, alright, alright.
I could have bought one for less up the street, but I went down Poway Road and I, I bought a new car down there. And we look at, at sales tax from Costco and gas stations and other things, but we also look at meals tax. We look at TOT, which is, you know, our hotel taxes. These things are all down because of COVID. So it's given us an extra punch, you know? If we had more Costcos, maybe we'd do better, but you know, we'll do the best we can. So the, the budget is real. The budget is a real issue. We have, we have to find a way to live within our means. And the, the good news is that we have very strong reserves, but you don't want to use your reserves for one-time costs.
Right.
So we have tough decisions to make. There's, there's city assets that, how well do you maintain them? You know, how much money do you put into capital projects? So we've deferred capital projects. We've deferred hiring and we've tried to find a, a meaningful way to get through this budget problem with COVID. And I guess time will tell how we do with that. But the bottom line is we have to raise revenues unless we don't want to be as safe as we are. I mean, we could conceivably say, well, we want less deputies out on the road. I don't know that that's a choice I'd like to make right now. I think that it's important that we have, you know, public safety as number one. You know, we've, we've tried to be selective about the budget as far as line items go. Our people are very forthcoming about that. We have an excellent financial director who we just hired not too long ago. Essentially he rewrote the budget himself once COVID hit.
Wow.
Yeah, it was a monumental job and he did a great job with it, but it's, but it's a challenge financially. It's been a number of years since I've been on the budget review committee, but the story has always been the same. It's, it's that we have to be aware that public safety, police and fire are a growing piece of the budget and revenues are not growing as much. So is, I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
I say, I remember I served on that budget review committee about, gosh, 15 years ago. And that's a, that's a boot camp, man, to learn how the city runs. You know, you get view of the whole, the whole picture. But I remember they were talking about even back then that the city didn't have a whole lot of land left to develop. I mean, that used to be one of the cash cows that they could, you know, develop on land, create a lot more property tax revenue. We're running out of land, you know? And one of the last pieces of land, I think that's in play, you know, potentially is the farm, you know, up there at Stone Ridge Country Club. And I know you're a supporter of that and you know, I've, I've been outspoken as a supporter as well. But one of the interesting topics that came up, I had a, you know, in a previous podcast with a city council candidate, a challenger, Chris Olps. He was commenting that the farm, what we approve on the ballot could possibly change, that we were only voting on a draft, not a final version. Is that true? Could, could the, could the plan change even after the voters approve it?
No, it can't. That's just absolutely patently not true. The, the farm is untypical, atypical of how many construction projects happen. Most of the time you've got a developer who's trying to push through as much as they can and, and maximize their profit and they give you a nod and a wink and tell you that, oh, we'll, we'll work it all out. Don't worry about it. Kevin McNamara is not your typical guy.
Right.
Measure A in the past was, was something like that. It was very squishy. There was an agreement in principle that we'd keep a golf course there in, in return for building condos for seniors. And, and I think the folks that were supportive of Measure A upfront, which essentially was a group of golfers on the course, they found out not too far down the line that things could change. And so they were not big supporters by the time it came to the ballot. The measure, Proposition P is different than that. McNamara spent the past two years holding public meetings, trying to get people to look at this concept he had. He's made a number of changes based upon meeting with, with folks who live around there or public interest. He worked this, this farm project through the city like it was already approved. And typically a developer wouldn't spend that kind of money, but he knew in order to win the trust of the voters, that he'd have to have a plan pre-approved by the city. And that specific plan is just that. It is, it's a blueprint for how this farm will work in it. And could it have some changes? Yeah, it could. If they don't want to build 160 homes, they can build 120, they could build seven. That would be a change to the plan that would be approved because Measure Proposition P says it will be up to 160 homes.
Ah, okay. So that's the top limit.
Yes.
I think everyone's always fearful that, you know, it's going to turn into, you know, 20-story high rises like the Mira Mesa apartment buildings off the freeway. That's the paranoia, you know, the extreme case.
No, that the housing styles and locations are pretty much locked in.
Right. That's my understanding, yes.
The preserve land, the roadways, all of these things are specific to the plan and it's that way or no way.
Right.
So, so he's, I think somewhere around a million dollars has been invested in, in trying to win the, the trust of the people in Poway to show them that I really do have a plan that's considered to be mixed use. It's, you know, it's, it's half residential, half open space type of thing. But some of the things I see online are folks who say, oh, you can't trust these guys and this and that. It's either this way or no way. So if it's approved by the voters, Proposition P is locked in to having this particular design. Could they move a house five feet or 10 feet one way? Probably. There's, there's some discretion on the part of our development services people. The director could, could look at something and ask questions about, you know, why would you want to make this minor change? And if it's deemed to be a minor change, he could approve that administratively. But if they say, we want to move a road over here or we want to change and put no houses here and put a bunch of them over here, they can't do that.
Right.
And so it has to go back to another vote of Prop FF.
Right.
There's no way in the world a developer would spend a million dollars to bring a project to market only to put it in jeopardy of changing it afterwards.
Right.
And the people would never put up with that. The Poway folks are too smart for that type of thing. And McNamara is one of us, so he knows a minor change would be acceptable. There would be no major change.
Yeah, and that makes sense to me. And you know, when, when, you know, they start doing groundbreaking, assuming it passes, you know, there might be some, you know, tiny adjustments. Like you said, a house might move five feet in one direction or another, but it's not going to be a material change, a significant change. You know, I just want to just shout out to some of the viewers, you know, people are already chiming in with questions. John Carson says, hey Barry, how you doing? He says, hi Barry. And Lucas chimes in, he says, how do you plan on not messing up our water situation again? And just walk me through the, our water problem we had last year and what are some of the things that the city did to correct that?
Okay. Poway before it was a city was actually a water district. And they built Lake Poway as a reservoir. As, as more and more settlers came to town, they, they realized that they didn't have a good water supply. We, we don't have water in the ground necessarily to support the number of folks that were, were going to be living here. So they decided that they would be their own entity, that they would, they would store water, they would clean the water and they would deliver the water out. That's been an operation for 50 years and it's never really come offline from 24 hours or so in 50 years. So it's a testament to the folks that built that. But like anything that you build 50 years ago, as the population changes and needs change, your situation could change relative to how you get your water and what you do with it. So the, and, and this is, I don't know how to say this, except that there's some irony to this because last August, we, we approved the city manager reaching out to the county water authority to say, you know, we don't have any backup plan. We've, we're making our own clean water up here. Most of all your other entities out there, water districts in other cities, they're either buying the water clean from county water authority or there's some mix where they've got a backup supply should their own fail. Our city manager sent a memo out to county water in August saying, we would like to sit down with you guys and discuss options because we, we think we really should have a clean water pipe coming into town as well instead of, you know, just untreated water. And so that was in the works. And then come Thanksgiving time, we find out, and, and the way it happened was some people had dirty water in their homes. They called the city. The city went out, there was six homes at the time. And our guys went, yeah, you know what? Shouldn't happen like that. And so they went back and searched and they found what happened. And it was, it was just a fluke, actually. I mean, a check valve that shouldn't open a certain way did because there was a piece of rope caught in this gate valve. And the city responded well. I mean, gosh, we gave out 800,000 bottles of water to people and, and we called in the state, you have to report these things directly. So we, you know, very honest about it and said, hey, we had a problem. We know what it was, but now we have a 10 million gallon pool that we need to flush and clean and we have to go back and flush out all our pipes and we have to go test and this and that. So the state came in and the department of drinking water and they wrote us up on this thing. They didn't find any negligence on the city's part to, to warrant a big fine or anything, but they did say that, you know what, you get kind of an old system there folks and you might want to get on the ball. And we said, well, you know, here's a piece of paper that we've already started this ball roll in a few months back.
Right.
So what we've done is we've made a very dedicated plan to change the way we do things. It's not, it's not ready for discussion yet publicly, but we're looking at a redesign of how we bring water into the city and to rely more on the county water authority to bring in clean water, to have that backup in place. The state has given us some things that they want us to do, the, the way that we store our clean water right now, they, they don't care for that. And it is, it's a very antiquated way. So are there safeguards in place? Yeah, I mean, people, we don't have a whole lot of people working up there, but the people who do work up there are all licensed and, and you know, there's all the requirements. If you're in the water business, you really need to know your stuff. So they test the water constantly. And even though the water was dirty, it was still drinkable. I mean, I, when I was a kid, I used to drink out of the stream in the woods and, but, but it's important to deliver fresh, clean water reliably to people. And so you're going to hear more about that in the future about a, a much bigger plan.
Yeah, I've just, I chuckled a little bit because I remember Mayor Voss was, was drinking the water, you know, when it wasn't yet finally approved, just to try to make the case that it was clean.
Not everybody had dirty water, John. I, I never had a problem with dirty water. But, but you can't tell. I mean, certain areas had a problem and we found a real problem. We knew what the cause was. It wasn't rocket science, you know? You get some dirt in the water and, you know, the, the contaminants were dirt.
So this is a crazy tangent, but it's fun talking to you because I know you're from Boston originally and we're talking about dirty water, right? So it's that song they play at Fenway, right?
Exactly.
So let's, you know, we're talking infrastructure. Let's, let's go to another topic. And this was another kind of an interesting topic that came up when Chris Olps and I were chatting and it was about Cox Cable. And you know, they're our television internet cable provider. And Chris was making the case that the city council had prevented AT&amp;T from coming in and being a competitor to Cox. And I was wondering if you had any thoughts on that issue?
Did he say when that happened and who said what?
I don't recall.
Well, I don't recall that ever happening. I know it didn't happen while I've been on the council. I, I know Dave Grush said that he talked to AT&amp;T some years ago, but I don't think that really happened. I don't think that, people say there, there's a monopoly in Poway with Cox Cable. That's not true. And people have made things up and said things, but there's no factual basis for any of that. The fact of the matter is, is that being an internet service provider or being a cable television provider or being a dial tone provider, it's a business and it's a business decision that these companies make whether or not it would be profitable to build their business in Poway. Cox Cable, who I have, decided that it worked in their favor, that they would spend the money on the infrastructure and that they would build out a system that people could use. I also have the ability to have Spectrum and I've had Spectrum in my house.
Really? You have two?
Yeah, I have two.
Yeah. So there are parts of Poway, because I know there's, well, there are parts of Poway where you can choose between competitors. Like I've never had that option.
I live in one. Yeah, I, I, Cox kept raising their rates on me and I got the thing in the mail from Spectrum and, and they came out and installed their system. And it, you know, we have over an old coach, we have a proposal from T-Mobile to change out some antennas. T-Mobile and Sprint merged. They're looking at some 5G gear in the future, but they're also looking at their initial infrastructure. So T-Mobile's in town as well. AT&amp;T, it's funny because people use AT&amp;T as this reference point, but they came when they had this system, and this was before my time. This was Tina White told me this story, that they wanted to provide a certain product set and it was a, I think it was fiber based and, and it involved these cabinets. And essentially they, they housed their gear in these large cabinets and, and they mount them in the street. And we had a demo and said, that thing makes a lot of noise. People are not going to go for this thing. And we have, I mean, we have rules that say you can't disturb the neighborhoods with your equipment. And so that's why they put them in a vault or they do something. And AT&amp;T said, well, that's what we have. And Tina said that, well, you know what? That's not going to work there. You need to have a different cabinet. You need to knock down the noise level and come back to us. And they said, no, we're not going to do it. It costs $100,000 to put one of these boxes out there. And if we can't use this box, we're not going to make a new box for you.
Wow.
And so they made a business decision to say, it's not profitable for us to locate our box there. And you know, our, you have to have this balance in, in making decisions as far as are the citizens better off having a noisy box that provides a service to them or, you know, do they want peace and quiet in their life? And at that time, the decision was made by AT&amp;T that they weren't going to change the way they did things. Now ironically, today, AT&amp;T is putting wires and pipes on Escola Road because we have the Escola Road undergrounding project going on there. It's being led by SDG&E, so they're going to have high power cables. going on there. It's being led by SDG&E, so they're going to have high-power cables. We have Cox out there, and we have AT&amp;T out there. And guess what? AT&amp;T is bringing dial tone to homes. They've made a business decision. They won't support internet.
Interesting. So, and, and so that, that's an interesting piece of history from Tina White. So the city didn't necessarily block AT&amp;T from doing business in Poway.
Absolutely not.
If you want to install that infrastructure, it needs to be quieter, so it's not disturbing our, our residents.
AT&amp;T has a giant building right in Old Poway Park, that's a big switching statement.
Yeah.
That, that place is full of gear. I mean, we just approved an extension on it, and, and a height increase on that as well. AT&amp;T has a big presence here in, in Poway. But they choose whether or not to provide internet services to people based upon profit. It's a pretty simple thing.
It is. It's a business decision. That makes sense.
Yeah. So we have Cox, we have, we have T-Mobile, we have Spectrum, and we have AT&amp;T. Nobody has blocked anybody from coming into City Hall and saying, hey, we want to provide service to people.
Right.
And, and for Chris to say that, that the city council blocked this decision, I would really like to see some evidence of that.
Yeah, I, I'd like to learn more about it as well. I mean, I think all of us would love to have competitive choices for our high-speed internet. You know, because Cox, we can debate the, the service quality of Cox, but they're not cheap, that's for sure. But let's, let's move on. I mean, we've gotten a ton of, like, people chiming in on the live stream, and I want to get to some of these questions from our audience. The first one is from Chris Cruz, and she said, please ask Barry about this disgruntled cities group that he plans to talk about on Tuesday, I guess at the city council meeting. Why not work on these issues within the League of California cities, instead of a brand-new group that he just started? So just interested in your thoughts on that.
Oh, I was wondering what she was talking about at first. I, I put an initiative to the council, because I'm one of the biggest complainers about local control, and about our ability to make decisions at a local level. I, I see our abilities being eroded by policy that they make in Sacramento. And, you know, the League of Cities does a lot of things, and, and they're involved in a lot of different ways. I was a member from the city to the League of Cities for a couple of years, so I, I know how they operate. We received a letter from a, a city council member at the city of Torrance, who I've never met before, but it, it just rang a bell with me. You know, it, it said, I'm sick and tired of this stuff. I hate being pushed around. I'm not going to take it anymore. And you know, John, you got to be honest about this stuff. I feel the exact same way.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, I, I wanted to promote it to the council tomorrow night. And, and it's just a council initiative to join this group that they put together of different cities that are just saying, hey, enough already. You know, one size doesn't fit all to the, to the state of California. And yet, there's people up there that make policy that directly affects us and cost our taxpayers an awful lot of money. And it's things that you or I will never see, but yet the city of Poway taxpayers are paying for it. And I'm just, if, if there's a way to push back and just at least go on the record to say, I disagree with this, leave us alone, we can manage our own affairs, we're adults here, I, I'd just like to say that. So it, I mean, the League of Cities is going to do what they're going to do, but we can do this as well.
But I think this is, I mean, to, to, with all due respect, I, I think this is a case of just making, you know, stating your piece, you know, making a statement. But in a lot of ways, Sacramento has power to implement their policies on Poway. And I know that's one of the, one of the scenarios that's being discussed with the farm. If it, if this is, if this doesn't pass, Sacramento may, maybe, maybe force us to, to no longer honor Prop FF. I mean, is that a possibility?
That is absolutely. And, and you know, it's, it's this little irony here that Chris Cruz brought this up, because Chris published something, I, I think it was on North and South Poway Votes, that, that was talking about all the bills that were, were put forth in the legislature this past year, and how they affect zoning, and how they affect local control. And she did an excellent job of, of listing each bill, and essentially what the, the pertinent content was in them. A lot of them did not make it to the governor's desk because of a shortened year, not because of a lack of interest, and people wanting to push that agenda. So I, I'm sure next year, we're going to see some more of those things. Tony Atkins, she's the one that was behind getting this ADU approved. You know, so it means that anybody who's a property owner could essentially subdivide their land, or just add on to their land, and add a second dwelling unit, or a third dwelling unit. And the city has nothing to say about that. I mean, we have certain minor regulations, but for the most part, the state has overridden any of our local control over these things. And it also supersedes HOAs. I live in an HOA, and I was thinking, okay, well, they, they can't come here and tell us what to do, because we own the streets, and we own, you know, the property. Wrong. They specifically have said, we don't care if you're in an HOA or not. If your neighbor wants to put a building in their backyard and rent it out to people, we're all for it. Tony Atkins also this year, she put forth a bill, initially it was to cut any single-family property into four units. And you could tear your house down in a single-family neighborhood. So imagine if you lived in Arbolitos, or you lived in Summerfield, you could tear down a single-family home and put up a fourplex. And the city would have no way to stop it. Well, it did get toned down. Now it's just a duplex. But essentially, you can, you can redesign single-family neighborhoods into multifamily, and the city can't stop it, and the neighbors can't stop it. That local control's gone. And there's no requirements for parking, and I'm a stickler on parking. If you live in a small cul-de-sac, and your neighbors decide that they're going to redevelop, they don't have to have parking available. They'll all be out in front of your house.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think Chris did a really good job at outlining those potential threats. Now, if we circle back to the farm, the, the farm has Proposition FF as protection. Prop FF is a home rule, and it's something that the city did years ago to try and protect these larger pieces of property from, from having high-density zoning changes to them, without a vote of the people. Now, Kevin McNamara has an option to buy the property. Michael Schlesinger, who is a professional real estate developer, and a real estate attorney, and a very wealthy Beverly Hills guy, and his partner is the same, with a track record, anybody can Google and look at, and see what they've done, he will take the property back on November 4th, if, if Prop P fails at the polls. McNamara walks away, he takes his, his loss, and he goes home. He's not going to come back and take another bite at the apple, and Schlesinger may or may not ever allow that to happen again. I don't know how he got an option in the first place, but he did. So McNamara walks away, the property reverts back to Michael Schlesinger. Now, I'm Michael Schlesinger, and I look at this property and say, okay, what are my options? My best option is to go to Tony Atkins' office, knock on her door, introduce myself, and say, I have 117 acres of prime property in North Poway, and we've tried to build two very reasonable projects there. And those people in Poway are a bunch of nimby's, and a bunch of snobs, and they don't want anybody coming in. But I know that you people up here are very concerned about housing and infill, and this would be a terrific infill. And I could fit hundreds and hundreds of homes here, if only you could help me get rid of this nagging nuisance called Proposition FF. And so, if the state wants to challenge that, anything can happen in court. And if they do, Prop FF goes away, and a lot of the protections go away with it. It's not outside of the realm of possibility.
Yeah, I, it's a really interesting scenario, because everyone's playing, you know, all the what ifs and hypotheticals on what could happen if Prop P fails. But yeah, I think we're going to find out. It is interesting, there was an article that someone had shared, I, I saw it on Facebook. It's just, the whole concept of what suburbia is all about is, is really going through a big change right now. And it's, it's housing, it's healthcare, it's a lot of other things. You know, sort of this, you know, this utopian vision of what Poway is all about, the city and the country. You know, a lot of that's changing, you know, right now. And, you know, I mean, how do you feel about that? Is Poway the city and the country still? Does that still apply?
I think, I think it does, inasmuch as no other cities around here have that. We, we still have a lot of ruralness to Poway. You know, if you, if, we have 78 miles of trails that go through the city, and a lot of those go through folks' backyards. And you can see, there's still corrals out there, there's still people that, that live in, in a ranch-type property. It's not what it used to be. But I, I understand back in the 80s, people called it a cow town, and that, you know, that it wasn't much going on here. I mean, talk to folks who say that, you know, the streets weren't connected at the time, or, so change has happened. I think as far as Poway goes, we, we are pretty built out. I mean, we do have, we have a goal of maintaining 50% of all the space in Poway as preserved open space. We're not too far away from that, actually. We have close to 40% of the land in Poway, and a lot of it's hills and slopes and things, and, and, you know, inaccessible areas, but it's dedicated public space. And so there's a huge difference between that and Stone Ridge Golf Course. People call Stone Ridge open space. Stone Ridge is undeveloped land. And actually, it's disturbed land, which gives it more of an advantage to being redeveloped. But for people to say that, I like it just the way it is, well, that's fine today, but it's going to change. Something will definitely happen to that property at Stone Ridge. And whether it's today, or five years from now, or 10 years from now, who knows? Well, the one thing we do know is that the farm is a specific plan, it's a specific development, and it's, it's not the perfect development. But it's the one we know today, and the one that, if we approve it, then it can't change again. Because now, there'll be HOA control over the other properties there, which will also have covenants on them. And it would end up having to go back through the, you know, city cycle. They'd have to do a whole new specific plan to change any of the undeveloped parcels. And it would, it just wouldn't pencil out. And the people of Poway would say, no way, we're not, we're not going to go for that. But the state could always override this thing. And so I, I'm a realist. I, I've got my head outside of the sand. And, and I know that something will happen in that land at some time or another. And I would much rather see the farm happen today because of the, the general benefits it brings to the entire community. Even if you don't drive in the driveway of that place ever, when you drive by on Escola Road, it's going to look terrific. It's going to look so much better than it does today. Sidewalks will be improved, the poles will come down, the wires will be gone. You'll see, you know, meandering wall and a path, and, and the setback, I think it's 75 feet back off of the street to the nearest housing that's going to be out there. It just, it makes a whole lot of sense for everybody in Poway, because we get these general improvements, we get the tax money, which will go back to the budget. Doesn't hurt to have extra tax money coming in. And, and the taxpayers pay zero. If you live there, you'll pay a lot. But if you just go there to buy fresh produce at a farm stand, or, or to be a member at the pool, or the pickleball courts, or some of the other amenities there, North Poway doesn't really have any of that stuff.
That's true. You know, most of those amenities are in Central or South Poway. So, I mean, the whole issue of development's amazing. I mean, we still, we haven't even talked about Poway Road, but let me, let's shift gears again. I mean, here's another great question that came in, and this was on my list, I wanted to ask you. But Amy Jackson asked, thoughts on holding an election if Steve Voss wins his county supervisor seat? You know, that's been an interesting topic. I talked a little bit about it with Kalen Frank and with Chris Olps. If Mayor Voss is, wins the supervisor position, how should his mayoral seat be filled? And if it does go to an appointment, and that appointment comes from the city council, then how should that other seat be filled? I mean, walk me through your, your scenario on that one.
Well, being an appointee myself, I know how, I know how the system works.
Yeah.
When, when I was selected to be on the city council, it was a pretty rigorous process. There were a number of people there that, that were qualified. There were some people there who had no reason to be there, and they readily admitted it once they saw what the plan was. So, you know, it, it kind of cull the herd back pretty easily. But, I mean, I don't, when Kalen was there, there were 15 people. For me, there were 20 people. And, and so it wasn't a secret that we were having a selection process. I hired a lot of people when I had my business going, and I looked for certain things in those people. And experience is one of them, but also willingness to do the job, a track record, you know, things that you can see on a resume, but also things that you can interview somebody, and you can, you can get that from them. It, it, it makes a difference when you go to hire somebody. So the way that this process works is that the, the council has a choice. The council can say, okay, we're going to go to a special election to hire that person. The public will hire them, public vote. Okay? So the problem is, is that it's twofold. Number one is financial. This is not a, a scheduled election period, so it's outside of that box. So it'll be a special election. And I know some people say, oh, well, you can spend $100,000 during a regular election cycle to add somebody to the, to the ticket. And that, that may or may not be so. And it also, the $100,000 is a lot of money to me. And, and what do you get? Okay, you're going to get less than half of a term from somebody. And, you know, in, in this case, let's say, let's say Steve gets, moves on, and becomes the supervisor. So now, if we choose to have an election, we're going to go out, we're going to spend at least a half a million dollars for an election for mayor. That cycle will take some time. So by the time you do finally make that selection, you may have 18 months left, rather than two years. And in the likelihood that you're going to get somebody who nobody knows from outside to get elected to that job, who's going to take over the mayor's job, and continue our motto of don't mess it up, I'm not in favor of that. And, and let's say you did that, now you're going to have to have, what if it was one of the, the council members that got voted in at a, at a general election, or a, a special election? Well, now that seat's open. So what are you going to say? Well, yeah, there's only like a year left now, but maybe since we're going with elections, we should go another election. So we're going to spend another half a million dollars on that? I'm just not a fan of doing that. What, what I would do is the same thing we've done before, is, is have everybody show up, put the word out, say, bring your resume, and come interview for the job. And, and you never know who's going to show up. And if they show up and they're qualified, I would say that, you know, maybe that's the person to do it. For mayor, they, they need to bring a pretty good skill set to the table.
Right, for sure. But, I mean, again, with all due respect, because I know you were appointed, but, you know, you were appointed, then Kalen Frank was appointed. I know that there's a lot of people in Poway that feel that when there is an appointment made, then that person automatically has a natural advantage of incumbency when they run for office to be reelected. And since we've had, again, full respect, but we've had two appointees in the last, gosh, it's been about six years. Do you think that there may be a public trust issue that maybe the voters really want in an election, even if it does cost money?
I don't think so. It's, there was an, an appointment made in the past, not too long back, but while I was living in Poway. And that person didn't get elected in the next cycle. Now, I think you, you have to prove yourself, once you get elected, once you get appointed, you have to, you have to prove yourself. People in Poway do their homework. Kalen Frank is extremely qualified. A lot of people went after her based upon her longevity in the city of Poway, saying that she wasn't qualified because she hadn't lived here long enough. Somewhere in the rankings, that's really low for me, as far as how long you've been here. When I look at somebody's resume, and I did look at hers, I met with her, and I was very impressed with her. And, you know, she brings something to the table that we didn't have. Not to mention the fact that she was a whole lot younger and female, which, which was great, and she lived in South Poway, which was great. So, I mean, those boxes got checked, but she brought a skill set to the table that nobody else had.
Right.
You know, folks have said, I've lived in Poway for 30 years. Well, what have you done for the community in 30 years that you've lived here? Show me your resume. Show me what you've done. Don't tell me, well, you know, I, I volunteer at my kid's school. Well, so did I, and so did you. You know, we all volunteer. We're good parents. That's what makes Poway School District so good, is all the parents that show up and help out their kids. I, I think that, I expect that from people. But tell me about your volunteering for the city. We have 700 people that volunteer for the city in all different roles, and... And unfortunately, this year, we couldn't have the the dinner to validate that and to thank these people for for giving their time and their talent. But but in the past, it's it's my favorite event to go to. Poway Park under the trees uh is is just beautiful. All these tables there, all these people are there. And I'll go from table to table and say, who are you and what do you do? And they tell you a story. So when a candidate or 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 somebody who wants to be appointed to something comes up with their resume in the hand, I would like to have have them say, I do this for the city of Poway. I I don't expect anything in return, you know? I volunteer to to clear trails, I I I do cleanup work. Menial things that, you know, that are necessary to maintain a nice culture in Poway. But too often I hear somebody tell me that I've lived here all these years. Well, good for you. I mean, you went, you went for a ride because somebody else was helping you to enjoy the city you're in. Uh, you know, right now, my garage is full of old furniture because the the Kiwanis is having a a rummage sale. And I I joined Kiwanis because Kiwanis does things for the general public. They they do things to help poor kids get scholarships. They 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 do things like they cook pancake breakfast for people and 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 um, you know, they can always use help. Dave Brush is out there raising his hand saying, please help me rake the mess on the side of Twin Peaks. I don't see people show up there and then, you know, the the folks who do show up there, I don't see them down asking for a job being the next mayor. So, you know, tell me what you've done. Don't tell me how long you've been here.
Mm-hmm. Um, again, full respect. I mean, Kalen Frank was only here three months. I mean, she didn't do a lot.
No, she didn't, neither did anybody else. And yet she brought a a clear understanding of how the operation works from a county level.
Right, yeah, that's true. I I believe that.
Educate us on a regular basis. She'll tell us how things work that, you know, I I don't have any idea of or or if I had an idea, at least I know I can bounce it off her.
Let's, let's talk about, here's another topic. What's your take on on the whole Amazon building? You know, when that went up, there were a lot of people that were upset. There was like concern about, was there a promise that the ridge line was going to be protected and the buildings would be invisible? It seemed like when that building went up, a lot of people were shocked. And I'm wondering what your thoughts are on the process on how that went up.
The Amazon building, well, now we call it Amazon.
It was the penitentiary before, right?
Well, yeah, it's had some other names. And and I'm hopeful in time that that the trees grow high enough to take the sting off this thing.
Okay.
But we need to keep in mind, the Business Park is in that whole area. And there's undeveloped properties out on that east wing that are still yet to be developed. And you'll probably see other buildings there as well. Um, having the water tower that people have looked at for years, they just become used to seeing that in the hillside. But if I could do it again, I I would really question why it had to sit on the pad that it sat on.
Yeah, it's a big pad.
It is a big pad, yes.
Why, why is it like that?
I don't know. I've asked questions about it and I was told that, you know, that's how they do things kind of thing. But I mean, you 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 can't unring the bell. Um, but when it went up as a pop-up building, those things work really quickly. So one day you don't see it, next day you do.
Yeah, it's tilt up. That's what I remember hearing that, yeah.
And as far as notice to the public goes, the nearest people that live there are maybe a mile away across the canyon over on Garden Road. Uh, they get the viewscape, but they don't get the notice for it.
But what, was there a promise made? And this might be before your time. Or is there a regulation or rule that exists that has those buildings offset enough so they're not really visible from the valley?
Not that I know of, John. I mean, we still have some some view lots that are on tops of hills over by Twin Peaks that are yet to be developed, but they're legal. You know, it's private property.
Interesting. Yeah, so I I I just, I just remember when that went up, there were, like, especially in the south and north Poway votes. I mean, people were really reacting strongly. Um, but I think, I think this goes back to Bauer Sox time in Poway. And, you know, was it a verbal commitment or was it something in in writing? I don't know the story.
I I don't know either, but but I do know that the Business Park is is uh full of large buildings. And most of them, you don't see too well. Some of them you see really well. Um, and there's probably more to come over in that area.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, there's, there's a warning right there. Um, how about Poway Center for the Performing Arts? That's, that's actually in your, right?
Sure, yeah.
So what do you think we should do there? I mean, I know that's been losing money and there's talk about maybe having someone else take it over or buy the facility. I mean, what are your thoughts on that project?
Well, um, I don't know if you had that when you were on Budget Review, but I had that when I was on Budget Review.
Yeah, I did.
But I mean, the the city has certain amenities. Uh, we we've got the swimming pool, there's a subsidy for that. It's a beautiful place, people come and use it. A lot of folks pay for it that don't use it. Same thing with uh Lake Poway Park. I mean, uh, some of these places in Old Poway Park, we we provide amenities to people. And it's it's part of being a city. And and the Poway Center for Performing Arts uh is a a unique place in that the way it was it was built and the reason why it was built. And this goes back to Jim Bauer Sox days as well. Uh, the 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 city had the desire to build something. Uh, PUSD had the land, and so they got together. Uh, there's been a user agreement between the the two entities. Um, it, the redevelopment authority was the the entity that actually built it, uh, which that's gone now.
Right.
But, you know, essentially, for the amount of programming that we do, it, we get hit with a high six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollar range uh annual subsidy for the taxpayers. And you you have to kind of look at that and say, is that fair to the taxpayers? And, you know, who benefits from this? Uh, and then behind that, we have capital improvement costs and they're significant. Uh, it's about three point three million dollars. And that will be earmarked for upkeep on the building. And so who's going to pay for that? So these things are real. Um, ironically, at the same time this year, uh, early this year, PUSD approached the city and said, we want more programming time. The current agreement is thirty-five percent for the school district. Uh, they want to use it more in line with Poway High School activities. And um, so they said, if they, they they kind of did some rough penciling on a on a napkin and said, okay, fine. If we if we increase our usage, what's the difference between that and just buying the place? So they asked, could the city entertain them buying the place? And, you know, we don't say no to people right off the bat. So it was like, okay, well, what do you have in mind? And keep in mind that you're not the only people that use that building. So we also have uh the the general public with the dance recitals and things, the symphony and the ballet and and other cultural groups that that depend on that building. And we have, um, you know, Michael Rennie's group who puts on these concerts. And so it's like, whatever plan you guys come back with, you need to figure out how to include all these other people. And um, so that's how this whole thing started. We threw the ball back at them and and gave them a couple of caveats. And um, it never really went anywhere. And and Dave Brush is a funny guy. That when when this all took place, Dave's like, how long is this going to take? It, Dave has experience with this, so he said, um, I don't want to be sitting here nine or ten months from now and finding out nothing's really happened. We need to do something. But we'll give you a little bit of rope, you know, to go for it. And so they said, I think it was three or four months at first. Well, now it's been a year, nothing's happened. And so, you know, I I I kind of put the ball in motion with the council and said, look, I want to have a subcommittee where we can meet with these user groups and try and find a way to solve the problem and have the city retain ownership. And Dave Brush had his hand right in the air saying, you know, I'm with you, let's go do this thing. So so for the past uh three or four months now, anyway, Dave Brush and I have been meeting on a regular basis with user groups and and with Michael Rennie's group from Poway on stage. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled with a couple of board members from PUSD. And we've met with the city extensively to try and understand what it is that it that you guys are doing and how we can have um uh, everybody happy but at a lower cost. So what what Dave and I have done is we've said, i- it's a very simple process, guys. We want to raise revenues and lower expenses. And if we do that, we'll see our subsidy go down. Uh, and then we have to figure out how do you address the elephant in the room, which is the capital improvement costs. Uh, we made a lot of headway with this. We've, we've met with some really good people. There's some dedicated folks that that uh do not want to see this fall into the hands of of PUSD. And uh, quite frankly, I don't either.
Yeah, yeah, they have their own set of problems, really.
Yeah, and you know, I I don't think they should have it. I I think it is a city asset. I just think we have to be financially responsible for it. We have to understand that there's some type of subsidy that that having a center for the arts involves. And so whatever that number is, we'll we'll kind of wean our way down to that. But uh, we've made a lot of headway. And and we've uncovered a lot of, a lot of internal things, uh, how the city allocates costs and and headcount and things. And a lot of it is, it's human costs.
Yeah, it always comes down to that, for sure.
Yeah, and you may find that, okay, well, listen, John, you, you know, you come here with your group and you rent the place for two days to sell tickets, but you're here for a week ahead of time doing practice and everything else. And you want our lighting people and you want our technical people. All that comes as a cost. And you didn't pay that before, John. Well, guess what? If you're going to come next year, it's going to cost you a little bit differently. And so, yeah, I mean, we're going to have to make some hard decisions and not everybody's going to like it. Uh, folks are going to say we can't afford to do that. But I think that if Dave and I are successful doing what we're trying to do, we're going to be able to lower the cost, we're going to be able to raise revenues and and we'll retain ownership.
Now, there are some local groups um that are trying to get a workshop organized. Um, and I don't know, I I guess that allows the the public to kind of open up the books with the city. I'm not sure how the workshop would work, but I know they've got some ideas on how to reduce that deficit from six hundred grand, you know, by half or more than half. I mean, have you seen those requests? Is is the city going to entertain a workshop?
I don't know who you're talking about. But but yeah, I mean, once we, once we come combine all this information and we collate it and we we sort through it and we figure out, okay, we can do this with this group, we can do that with that group, uh, then it'll be public.
Right.
But if somebody has a good idea, and I'm not full of good ideas, John, have them contact me.
Okay. Okay.
I am all for giving someone else credit for a good idea.
All right, well, we need more good ideas, right? We should encourage good ideas.
Yes.
Um, you know, we're at about an hour. Can, I just want to go a little longer. Are you good with that?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and I won't drag it out, okay? We won't, we won't set a a new world record here on the podcast. Um, but let's talk about the affordable housing issue. Because I know, you know, there are the three sites that were being entertained. The one on Twin Peaks, the the one out by Big Stone Lodge and the Monte Vista site. And I know it was important to you that that the the Twin Peaks site wasn't developed. Um, and what do you think should be done with that site? I mean, is is should that ever be developed? It's the one out there by the North County Soccer Park?
Yeah, you know what? This is a great subject to talk about because it's it's, there's a lot of misconceptions about this stuff. Uh, so it, let's, let's back up a few years to probably the most horrible council meeting I've ever sat in on, uh, where we we talked about whether or not the the veterans would have uh affordable housing at that location. And um, it was a mess, quite frankly. And and the whole, I, we're going to go over time on this one, but it's important to talk about because a lot of people have this idea that um the the city council came after the veterans and and wouldn't allow the veterans to live there and and this and that. Or that the neighbors said, we don't want that here, there's, there's no, uh, there's too much traffic or whatever. Neither one of those are true. So it's important to to look at the behind the curtains setup for this thing. And years ago, and it was before I came on the council, but not too far before that, uh, there was a uh, an event held in Sacramento. And Jim Cunningham, who was the the council member at the time, uh, was up there on behalf of the city. And and the way these things work is they they'll have like a hotel uh function room or something. And and outside in the hallway, they'll have tables set up and they'll have different vendors out there. And and one of these vendors was a group called Calvet. And Jim stopped to talk to them and said, what do you guys do? And they said, well, we we finance and and build affordable housing for veterans. And Jim said, tell me more. Uh, so, so they they spoke, Jim invited them to come down and they they told him, we don't build it, we need to go with a builder. And we use Habitat for Humanity as our builder. Uh, but we provide all of the wraparound services, we provide all the funding and the operations, and we have a proven track record. And Jim's like, great, yep, come on down. So they, so these folks came down from Sacramento. They ended up looking at these different pieces of land and said, you know, Twin Peaks might work. Uh, it's a nice piece of land and and uh it, we could make that work. The problem is, is that this lady with us, who's our Sacramento Habitat lady, who we work with a lot, she can't do it here because Habitat's like a franchise and San Diego has their own Habitat. So she'll tell you who to talk to down here, but then she's going back to Sacramento. And so it was like, yeah, okay, fine. So Habitat locally came in, who didn't have any familiarity with Calvet and who also had never built a project like this before. Habitat San Diego was doing uh single home rehabs and things of that sort. Having, you know, folks come and clean up a park or do other things, but but providing housing on a much smaller basis. This was a big project and initially it was twenty-six units. Uh, Dave Brush and I met together because of the Brown Act, you can only have two people at one time. So he and I had a a number of meetings with them and it was really uncomfortable. It it um, it was like, I don't think these folks are listening. Well, what we didn't know was that Calvet felt the same way about them. And Calvet would tell them that you guys, we're paying for this. You need to work with us on this thing and you need to understand what our requirements are. They they have real paperwork that has to get filled out with the state in order to qualify and and other things. They couldn't work well together. And the Habitat folks just really didn't have the experience. They they were at City Hall with the Development Services people. It's not easy to get anything done to build when you're an experienced builder. When you're an inexperienced builder, it's really hard to get something done. They could never quite figure out how to get this thing arranged properly. And they had a bad design and they really didn't have any parking. Um, and it and that that lot is a tough lot because there's no external parking there. So so we kept telling them that they need to come back with a plan that involves guest spacing uh for parking, handicap parking, which they hadn't had. Um, and a lot of other things that they just would, they would like give us lip service. And so a couple of things happened. Uh, Calvet found out that, Calvet had requested a number of times that the Habitat folks worked more closely with them and it fell on deaf ears. And then, and I know this because I called the people at Habitat myself because I couldn't understand what happened here. But the Habitat folks told me that that one of their people showed them an article that was in the Chieftain that said that the city was going to go forward with this with the Habitat people. And the Calvet folks said, that's it, we're out. And they left town. They had six million dollars to spend here in Poway to build a project, but they couldn't get along with the builder. And essentially, they, they just had a bad relationship and they left. And so that means all the veteran services went with them and the funding. So when, next time we met with the Habitat people, we said, well, what's going on? They said, well, the city can pay for it and we'll find a way to provide services. We said, but it's no longer a veterans project now. Well, no, it's going to be section eight and and veterans can come live there if they want. And so this is really what happened. This is what blew up the whole deal, was that the funding left town. So we're going to stick the taxpayers with the bill for this thing. We had a builder who wouldn't listen to anybody. They didn't listen to us, they didn't listen to Calvet, and they had a bad plan. So regardless of the neighbors saying they didn't want the traffic there and and regardless of the veterans saying the city kicked us out or whatever they did, none of that was true. So that's why that lot sits empty today. And and the problem is, is that that lot is part of the housing supply. So let's say that the um, the guys at the soccer park want to annex that, which would be probably pretty good for them. Or a commercial property wants to come in and and locate there. We have to replace that allocation for housing. So we would have to trade that two acre lot for another two acre lot that somebody else has, that they're willing to do that. So we would have to trade that two-acre lot for another two-acre lot that somebody else has, that they're willing to do that. So if that doesn't happen, I could see maybe eight or 10 units in there, something that has, you know, the right amenities to fit in that spot. Well, I don't think, I would never approve a facility of 24 units in there. They just don't fit properly. So that's why Twin Peaks never got built. And it just really got ugly with the whole thing coming up. But then there was a lot of misconceptions about things, and I didn't really understand the whole thing until I talked to Calvet directly.
Do we, like today in Poway, do we have affordable housing for veterans now?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
We have, we have housing that's affordable that veterans could live in, but we don't have something specifically like a veterans' village type of thing. Not that I know of. But we have, if you think about it, most people don't understand how much affordable housing we have in Poway. We've got almost 700 units of affordable housing. And people refuse to believe that Brighton Place is affordable housing, because when you're at the farmer's market and you look across, you go, "Oh, come on, that's not affordable."
Yeah, that's pretty nice.
It really is, yeah.
Yeah.
And, I mean, we've had places that win awards, and they're run really, really well. They don't have the stigma of, you know, ghettos and high crime and things like that. We have very few problems, because the folks that run these operations, if you come there to live with your family, you sign a document that said if your kid steps out of line, you get kicked out. Yeah, and so people really toe the line because they enjoy living there. It's a good quality of life.
Right.
Yeah, so we have these other, so we've got like maybe, maybe a handful of potential properties. Monte Vista is probably the best of the bunch. It's in a good spot, especially if you're gonna look at senior housing, veterans' housing or disabled housing, special needs housing of sorts, because of its location to healthcare providers. It's all right there. And being right on Palmerato Road, the bus actually goes right on Palmerato Road, so that's pretty good as well. And so, you know, John Mullen floated something not too long ago, just to try and throw a trial balloon out there to see if anybody would take advantage of it. It all comes down to funding. It's incredibly expensive to build something, and it's incredibly difficult to build something. And Villa de Vida is a perfect example of that. The city, we gave a two-acre lot to Villa de Vida. And we got credit for that. We got credit for 52 units of affordable housing. They're all Section 8, and they're 52 one-bedroom apartments. But they also have like a great room, and there's a manager's room, which the manager is like, kind of like a team mom person. And so these are special needs people. They're high-functioning. But they're still, I mean, it gets to a point where parents get nervous because their special needs kid is now 35 years old, and the parents are 75 years old. Okay, so what's the future look like? So unfortunately, it costs so much money to build these things. It costs about $600,000 per unit to build this building. So we're looking at a $30 million building, and it's outrageous. It's truly outrageous how much it costs. Point Loma did a study that says 40% of the cost of building a home in Southern California is attributed to paperwork and to permits and government. So when people come here, they want to build a million-dollar house, they get a $600,000 house, because the other 400 just disappeared.
Do you have control over that at the city level? I mean, in terms of our impact fees and building permit fees?
Very little. We try to, we try to stay out of the way. But, you know, especially environmental now. Environmental costs are enormous. Water retention, things of that sort, artifacts. You have to have a cultural person come, and there was a gentleman who did a small development here. He had to spend $22,000 to have a bird watcher come and walk around the property in the mornings and tell them, "Okay." Yes, really. I said, "$22,000," and he goes, "Yeah." He said, "This guy would come here before we start work. He'd walk around, he'd go, 'Yeah, okay.'" And I said, "And you paid him?" And he goes, "I had to."
I got the wrong career, my friend.
Yeah, there are these fees that are outrageous. And I get calls from people on a regular basis telling me how shocked they are to learn about what a permitting process involves.
So we could make a lot of money as bird watchers or demographers. You know, but just on the affordable housing piece, like in your camp, in your campaign statement, it's in like the handout, the booklet, you make reference to affordable housing for senior veterans.
Yes.
What are you, what are you talking about there?
That's real. That's the lot that used to be the old bank on Terrascan, and it's part of the Commons Project. So, as part of the Commons Project, the city got this concession for affordable housing. And so they hired Chelsea Investments, and Chelsea is a very well-known affordable housing builder and operator. So they're gonna build 44 units on that lot, and 11 of those units are set aside for veterans.
Ah, okay, I didn't know that.
Yes, you asked me if we had any specific veterans. You didn't ask me if we were planning on any specific. Yes, we are. So that's gonna be a nice spot. I've seen, you know, the conceptuals for the building and everything. They've already broken ground on it, and they've done their trenching out in the street, but it'll be 44 units with 11 set aside for veterans.
Interesting. So I knew, I knew there was affordable housing on that Terrascan lot. I didn't know that there was a specific call-out for veterans. And see, I guess you have to be a veteran to qualify, right?
Yep.
Interesting. You know, Barry, we could go on forever. I mean, there's a million other topics we could talk about. What have we not talked about so far that you want to talk about?
You know, the most important thing right now is the farm. I'm just, I'm just concerned that people think if, if this fails at the polls, and I think most voters start with "no." And so if they just arbitrarily say, "I don't want anything. I don't want any people here," I'm just really, truly worried about what the next thing will be and whether or not we have any control over it at all. Today, we have a lot of control over it. The voters have control over it. They're gonna make the final decision. But if it does happen, we can build something there that I think we could be proud of. I think it'll have some really nice amenities to it. I'll meet you there for a beer.
I'd love that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have that now. I mean, Stoneridge had some of that. You know, if you had your baseball banquet there or something, but that's gone. You know, and it's, it is such a blight. I've met with people over there, and I guess the two, the two things that I see on these "No on P" signs is no more traffic and no more density. Well, there's always gonna be some traffic. There's always gonna be some density. Where I live, which is just down the street from the place, we've got 85 homes in my neighborhood and two empty lots from fires. But we never have any problem getting in or out of Espola Road. And Bridlewood Lakeside has 170-odd homes in there. The people I talk to there, they don't have an issue. The people in Green Valley coming down to the, to the traffic lights at Poway, Lake Poway Road, they don't have a long wait to get on or off Espola. The Summerfield people that I've talked to, Summerfield's 172. It's bigger than what they're proposing here. They don't have problems getting in or out of there. Valverde, they have a traffic light. The folks who live up in the back, I've talked to everybody in all of these different places, and I've asked them exactly the same question. "How much traffic do you have?" And they say, "Well, when the school's in session, we have traffic." Well, yeah, we all know that. And then, you know, the folks on Stone Canyon were saying, "Well, no, we don't want them using our road as a cut-through." We can fix the traffic lights so that cars will be disincented to go up Stone Canyon Road. It's much easier to take a right and go on Espola. McNamara has, you know, offered to fix all the traffic lights signaling from the new Martin Court lights they proposed, all the way down to Rancho Bernardo Road. There's four sets of lights there, and the one at Palmerato and Stone Canyon, so that they all, they all adapt automatically to traffic flow. This is something we don't have in Poway, and it's something that perhaps we could parlay into using on Poway Road as well. But the taxpayers...
I was gonna say, the way that Kevin and his consultants described the real-time algorithm to update the traffic signals so they're always optimized for flow, I thought was a great idea, and yeah, something that Poway Road could really use.
Absolutely, and this technology is available. It's working in some places out there. And if we could bring that to Poway Road and not have to pay for it, the taxpayers would get a break. So the way I see the farm is that it provides housing for 160 families. And it opens up the market. If you talk to Realtors nowadays, there's very little inventory available in Poway. Poway is still extremely desirable to live in. So if you live in South Poway, if you live in, on Garden Road or somewhere down there, and you say, "You know what? I'd like to move up, but it's just too hard to move up because the barrier's too high." Well, maybe there's a place in Summerfield or somewhere for a couple hundred thousand dollars more. You could move there, and now it opens up your home. So somebody can come in and start a home. You know, I think it provides opportunities for the whole community to move around a little bit. You know, folks that live out in Old Coach in a big home, they say, "Well, I'd like to, you know, downsize, and if I had a place where I had recreational, you know, amenities right there, I'll move there." So maybe somebody wants the big house in Old Coach. I just think there's a lot of benefits there that don't affect the taxpayers at all. And when it comes to density, 160 homes on 117 acres, to me, is a far cry from what Michael Slesinger's gonna propose.
Yeah, the, it does, I've talked about that, where I think there's a cascading effect, where, you know, the houses at the farm aren't affordable housing. But, but to your point, some people are gonna move up. That's gonna free up a lower-priced home, and people will move up to that and so on down the line. But, you know, it's just a side story. One of my, you're talking about the inventory in Poway is low. Some friends of ours, they just put their home up for sale for $1.2 million, and it sold over the weekend, like in a couple of days, and there were four offers that were above listing price. There is a massive demand for housing in Poway. So, yeah, those houses at the farm will be bought, and then they're gonna have to move from somewhere, which will free up that house that they leave.
Yeah, so I mean, that's a real concern, that it's an opportunity that we might miss. And, you know, my goal is to leave Poway better than we found it. So why don't we talk about development on Poway Road, and then I've got to cut out.
That's fair. Let's do it.
I mean, there's a lot of talk about how the city has allowed developers to run wild on Poway Road and that, you know, the traffic's gonna be at a standstill and these things. I hear these stories, but the facts are the facts, John. The only project that we approved, which was the cornerstone, was replacing the old Poway Irrigation Building and the old Poway Chieftain Building that were rat nests. And it's the outpost. So the outpost is 53 units. It has, you know, the ability for people to buy there. It has other amenities to it. I mean, at the time, they proposed a choose gym, and then the guys from the barrel room and the burger joint over there in Rancho Bernardo. Those guys were talking about, you know, putting something in like a food court type of thing, which now COVID won't allow that. So we're gonna have to see what, what does actually get built there. But, I mean, they met all the requirements. They said, "Okay, we know you guys are sticklers about parking. We'll dig a giant hole in the ground." And we told them, "You dig a hole in the ground, water's gonna come out."
Yeah.
And they said, "Oh, we build these things. We know what we're doing." Well, that's not on the taxpayers. That's on the developers. And they continued to do what they did, and now they've got it pretty much squared away, so. But that's 53 units. 53 units doesn't change the world, but it does improve that particular parcel down there. And then next door to that, we had a number of properties that were owned through the Redevelopment Authority that the state was gonna take away from us and essentially auction off. We made a conscious decision to buy those properties with redevelopment money that we still had. We got a 20% discount off that. And we used that land to entice a developer to come in with a plan that would fit, that would be workable. So the Commons Plan came in for that. Commons is 97 units and, and some pads for commercial. And the problem is that we don't really know what commercial is nowadays, and these developers aren't sure themselves, because things have rapidly changed. If you notice all of the Amazon trucks in your neighborhood, that'll tell you something. But being in the retail business, it's tough right now. And so unless you have like a restaurant, a coffee shop, a dry cleaner, something Amazon can't compete against, we just don't know. So they're gonna build out pads on Poway Road. They've got four unique pads out there. They'll stub them and have utilities available, and essentially it'll be built to suit. So if you or I came to them and said, "You know, I want to have this commercial property there, this restaurant there or something," they'll build it for you. So we're gonna see that happen. It is kind of odd. The taco shop is still there, but it's fenced in. Story I heard was it's a family-owned thing, and you can't get families to all agree on something. The developer wanted to have them throw in with them. There were six different owners of properties in the Commons. So they had to negotiate for a couple of years with all these different disparate groups. But they said, "How about if we build you a brand-new restaurant as part of a build-out?" And they're like, "No, we're good. We like what we have."
Really?
Yeah, and like the Poway TV building. When you see that there? I mean, that's not the nicest building on Poway Road.
No.
And yet it's owned by people who just didn't see the value in throwing in with the developer. And so, you know, it's just, it might be a missed opportunity for them, or maybe someday down the road, they'll go, "Yeah, okay." And, and so the developer has that in mind, that, you know, over time, maybe those properties will come in. If you notice now, the Hertz building is for sale, because Hertz went down the tubes.
Oh, well, yeah, I know Hertz went down, but I didn't know the building was for sale.
Yeah, the building's been for sale, but, but, you know, that came after the fact. The other car rental place is still there. Enterprise, yep, because they have a long-term lease. So the property owner, whether or not they wanted to go in with the Commons or not, the tenant said, "No," you know. And that could change over time. So if you look at it, you've got 97 units with the Commons, you've got 53 with the outpost. And across the street, you've got 44. And that 97, I think, is divided. They're gonna build some more condos behind them, the senior housing over there too on Terrascan, but I think it's 97 total. So we're talking less than 200 units. And people just say, "Oh, boy, they really destroyed the whole Poway Road scene." Well, look what they replaced. Those were not viable, functional, commercial buildings. They were desolate and blighted. And especially, I mean, maybe Power Stow Way might have been successful, because they, they had tenants and things. But their location was, was right on the creek and right adjacent to Community Park. So you've got the skate park, and then you've got the kids' play area, you've got the bocce courts, you've got the creek. And now you're gonna have the new senior center, which is a community center, and the newly redone pool. Those places are gonna open up on the backside to them. It's gonna be really nice, and there's public access through there. So if you wanna, you know, take a walk, you can go down through the back and you can cut right out to Community Park. The bowling alley. And you gotta keep in mind that, with the exception of the Commons, the city didn't own any land down there. So this is all private property. And private property owners have, you know, they have the right to say, "I've run a bowling alley for 40 years. My wife's not well. I'm retiring. I'm gonna sell it."
Right.
They have that right. The city has no reason to get in the way of something like that. And if they did, I wouldn't work for the city, because government needs to keep their nose out of private property. And so those folks and the folks that had all the thrift shops, you know, the thrift shops did a pretty good business down there. And a lot of the churches, you know, had an outlet to move stuff through and make some money, and it all functioned pretty well. But the property owner decided that they want to make a deal with Fairfield. Now, people say we're a rubber stamp for, you know, any development that... I've been told I was in the pocket of the developers, and every time I check my pockets, I've got about $3, and no, nobody else in there. But Fairfield has come for the past two years with plans, and we keep saying to them, "That doesn't fit. That's not right. That doesn't work." And recently, we just had, you know, a public meeting on that, but we've met with them privately as well. We don't just rubber-stamp things. You know, if it doesn't fit, I mean, the whole idea between, to propose this Poway Road specific plan was to have a framework, like a blueprint, for how we saw the future of Poway. like a blueprint for how we saw the future of Poway. And I I know one of your guests said, why are we doing all this at one time? We're not doing this all at one time. It's not, it's not on our schedule. It's what the developers bring to us. So it, we don't, we don't control the schedule, but what we can do is we can control the field. And we can say, okay, in these areas, here's what we're looking for. And so that that specific plan, which which very much was a product of community involvement. There was a dozen people on the panel of different backgrounds and and different areas and and it's not a perfect plan. There's some things it probably could use to get tuned up in there. But what it does is it gives it gives a developer an idea of of what the ground rules are. They still have to be approved through the city council in in many cases, if if you want to go outside the boundaries. You know, when we heard from Fairfield that they said, oh, well, we're a public amenities. And it's like, well, we got a traffic light. It's like, that's not a public amenity. Well, we have a dog park. It's like, well, we already got a dog park. And I see people coming to your place to bring their dog. You know, we we have to coach these folks and encourage them to kind of have have the same similar vision that we have. So it's.
I think it's going to be interesting when they build out and to your point, how the the Commons and Community Park are all going to be sort of, for lack of a better term, kind of integrated, you know, there's going to be flow of walkways through there. It's going to change the radically how Poway Road really works. You know, and I think a lot of people are dwelling on the worst case scenario. There's a lot of upside as far as the walkable parts of it. But do you wonder if maybe with, you know, what is it now going to be a couple hundred units in total between Commons and Outpost? Do you think Community Park is going to get too crowded? Do you think we're going to have a problem there?
I don't. I don't see it. We have another, Dave Brush and I have another little thing going with the community services people to do a reevaluation of all of Community Park. What gets used today? What are the trends? You know, do we need to have two tennis courts? Should we divide one into pickleball? How often do we use the Little League fields? We have Poway National. We have Poway American. We have half the people that used to play twenty years ago. So we just have one group. So we're looking at how do you make it more effective and more efficient based upon people's use? I think Dog Park is a great idea down there. We've got three pens. There's always people down there. They, you know, they they really do enjoy it. The pool is fabulous. I don't know if you've seen the pool since it got remodeled, but it is really, it's really something. And the new community center is going to be wonderful as well. There'll be meeting rooms down there. There'll be classrooms down there. We've got Boys and Girls Club down there as well. So I think there'll be, you know, there'll be some outlets down there. It'll remain to be seen how much demand there is. But Parkland is very expensive. It's a lot less to retune it than it is to try and go out and find new new land and redevelop it.
Right. You know, I I was just back there. The, yeah, the community center, man, it's going up fast.
Yeah.
They've been going vertical for a while. So.
You know, we we talked about Espola Road and and what happens when you get the wrong contractor?
Yes.
If you look at the senior center, that's what happens when you get the right contractor. We have this part, the name is EC Constructors, Constructors. And I I don't know if it's East County or Alcoa Home. But these folks, they're ahead of schedule. They're under budget.
Wow.
And they they built a lot of things for the county. And I called a friend of mine who's a got a big job at the county and directly with contracts. And said, you know, these folks, because they said they built for you guys. And he's like, let me talk to my people. Guy came back and he said, if you get them the contract, he said, you'll love them. He said, we love those guys. And this guy's really particular about who he loves. And it's, I mean, like you said, they're just going gangbusters. So I think Tuesday night, we're going to get an update on on tomorrow night on Capital Projects and the the community center is one of those things. But it's it's going to be a showcase, a showplace. It'll be nice.
Barry, the election day is right around the corner. You feeling good?
Yeah, I feel good. Yeah.
Good. How how can people get in touch with you? What's the best way for them to reach you?
They just Google my name. Barry Leonard for Poway is my my campaign website. I put my cell phone number out there for folks. I'm I'm always meeting with somebody about something. Most of it's land use. Most of it's that type of stuff. So this local control thing is is kind of meaningful that even if even if we don't get them to do anything, at least we had a voice to say we don't appreciate their help. Yeah, I, you know, it's different now that the districts are in place. I I I don't appreciate the fact that we were told by Sacramento that they know what's best for us once again. And that that if you if you look under the covers, essentially what they were saying was we're a racist community because Joe Diaz lost a race twenty years ago. I I never heard of him before or after. And and so because of that, you know, we have this demographer and this this lawyer and and I think we have fifteen percent Hispanic population and about six to eight percent Asian. Not everybody lives in the same area. And I I didn't know we were allegedly a racist community, but now we have districts. Essentially, they made my job a little easier.
Well, yeah, from a candidate's perspective, you have less turf to cover. But do you think and I I don't want to go too long on this, but do you do you think this, the fact that we have districts, regardless of the demography of racial and ethnicity? Isn't it just good from a geographical perspective and neighborhoods are more aligned with their representative?
Yeah, I do. I I think it is good. I just don't like having someone hold a gun to your head and accuse you of something you're not. I think, you know, enough of the townspeople came out and said, we'd rather have it this way. I think they'd get it that way. You know, we listen to the people. And it's just not many people pay attention to that type of stuff. I mean, if you ask somebody now, who is who is on the city council? They'd be lucky to tell you two people out of four, maybe one person out of four. If you ask them about districts, they wouldn't even know what a district was. You know, I have people call me and say, how come I can't vote for you?
Yeah.
So it's, you know, I I just, I think that local control is important. I think we understand our needs at a at a ground level. We can get the job done. We're not dumb people. And and we know how to do the right thing when given a choice. We have high ethics. We have high standards. And it's a matter of just do the right thing. It's easy to do the right thing.
Yeah, it's just like Spike Lee joint, man. Do the right thing.
Yeah. So, yeah, thankfully, November third is going to come soon. I'm I'm curious to see what happens where everybody now has a ballot at home. And a lot of folks didn't. And a lot of people didn't make the effort to go down and vote at their local voting station. So I voted from home past two or three cycles because it's it's convenient. You can sit down with your ballot and not have somebody behind you. You know, you wonder. But will it be eighty or ninety percent people vote? I don't know. It's it's going to be interesting. And and, you know, presidentially, I heard we had an election there too. So that ought to raise some folks.
Really?
Yeah, you probably haven't heard.
But I I don't think you, they can't count the absentee ballots until the polls close, right? Isn't that a new rule?
I don't know if they can count some ahead of time. I brought my ballot down to the to the library where they had the the box. It's like a cooler. You're going to slide it in the slot and it's two people watching you. And and they did the right thing. I brought my wife's ballot with me as well. And and they said, well, you need to sign her envelope to say you have custody of it. And, you know, so they're doing the right things from Register Our Voters. And I think that if people have some trust in that, that, you know, maybe we'll get a good, honest turnout. But gosh, man, who knows what's going to happen? You know, but on a local level, I think, you know, we're doing our best not to mess things up. I think we've 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 got a pretty good grip on things and and the reason I'm here is just because I I want to see some things done.
Yeah. Well, there's a lot going on. I'll tell you what, this Poway Road project, they've been talking about it forever. And now it's going, you know, like it or not, it, things are happening. So.
But there's a lot more down there too, John.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of other spaces down there that will eventually probably get updated and filled in.
Yeah.
I mean, the wood pile, right? Everybody talks about the wood pile. And it's it's like the geographical significant place in Poway. Oh, you know about the wood pile? That said a for sale sign on it for a while.
There's an out the equipment rental place. I mean, we can go down the list, but hey, we're getting a Pollo Loco, right? So that's exciting news.
Yeah, they're doing a lot of work over there. And we're getting Aldi and we're and we're getting Harbor Freight Tools.
Yeah, Aldi, I think is going to be good. I've been in one of them before. I I it's a different kind of shopping experience.
As I've been told, I was down there the other night. They've got all their freezers in in place and everything and and the shelving looks like it's ready to get filled up. And Atlas Foods over at Target, we're going to get something new there as well.
So you haven't told us who it is. I know we all have suspicions, right?
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of whispering going on out there. And you know what? Most of it's probably accurate. It's going to put Poway on the map as far as being a place that has this. And if you look at.
You may have tipped it right there.
Well, as a business person, John, if you owned a forty five thousand square foot empty building, you'd be pretty nervous right now. You know, when you look at the the future of of these strip malls and Regency Centers that owns that particular building, they own four hundred and fifty of these locations with multiple tenants. And I I met onsite over there with the vice president, local vice president from there, Patrick, good guy. And I said, I asked him, tell me what commercial is. And he looked at me and he goes, I'm not really sure. And they have four hundred and fifty of these. He said, the world has changed so dramatically. And then COVID hit after that. I mean, they were always looking over their shoulder. The internet putting a lot of these places out of business. So Albertson's did okay over there. The next group, not so much. And then Atlas was kind of an odd fit for that demographic. But now they've got a forty five thousand square foot building where they've got a tenant and a lease in hand. And that's like gold.
Yeah.
And and this is a quality tenant. And it's going to be an attractive facility. And it's going to service lots of people in a good way. So if things happen the way I expect them will, that they will, it's going to be a really nice upgrade, not only to that center, because Target's really popular over there. It's a great spot. And you've got, you know, Starbucks right on the corner. And but all of the ancillary buildings around there, we got letters from most of those tenants saying this is great for us, you know, please, what it what it takes to rent that building because if it's empty, it's not good for us at all. So it's a rising tide.
Maybe they'll bring in like a, you know, like you say, like a grocer or retailer. I know people will say maybe it's Whole Foods, maybe it's Amazon. But imagine if, well, doesn't Amazon own Whole Foods? They might.
Yes, they do.
But I imagine if that facility is just to make the math easy, like, you know, twenty, twenty five percent retail. And then the balance is actually a warehouse for a distribution facility for, you know, e commerce to deliver groceries to your home. So there's a lot of possibilities.
No, they can't do that, John.
They can't?
No, they can't. No.
Oh, wow.
There's only a limited amount of of warehousing and distribution associated with a grocery store. You know, trucks in, trucks out type of thing.
Okay.
So that would require a a special permit to do something like that. And I don't think that would get approved. But if you had a high quality grocery store there with full service, I think that would get approved. And if there was, you know, I mean, all grocery stores are are fed through trucks and commerce. But if it happens the way that I I heard it would, I think it's going to be a real benefit to the community. And there's nothing in that area. You know, folks say, hey, I have to go to Carmel Mountain. I go to Ralph's or something, Trader Joe's. And and I think people would stay in Poway.
Yeah, well, a lot of people go to the what is it? The Albertsons at Palmerado and Rancho Bernardo Road? You know, we want to shop Poway, right?
Yes, exactly. And it's it's important because it it'll help all the other stores around there. It'll be that rising tide.
Exactly. Exactly. We've been going forever. So I I don't want to hold you up, but thanks for joining me. You know, this has been great.
All right, we'll do it tomorrow, same time.
Good luck in your campaign. I mean, you've got an exciting race. You've got a really interesting opponent who's been a guest on my podcast. I think we're all fascinated to see how this all shakes out. And I think frankly, a lot of us are really looking forward to Election Day so we can turn the page on all of this, right?
Amen. Yeah, one way or the other, we'll survive the whole thing, John. You know, it would be a certain age, you you say, okay, how much is it really going to change the pendulum? It'd be nice if it came back more toward the center. I'm tired of dealing with fringes, but I I'm more of a centrist.
Okay. Well, all good, Barry. Well, thanks again, man. I really enjoyed it.
My pleasure. Thank you. Appreciate it.